Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Internet City Council meeting. It's Tuesday the 27th of January at 7:30 in the morning. And I know we were all held up by the break. The break showed that council members are present today. And reporter Johnson, which you mentioned, will be able to walk us through it. Thank you. Visitor public comment. Okay. Moving forward because we have a bunch of things to do today. Reminder of folks, the council of government dinner coming up. When?
That's tomorrow.
Tomorrow maybe. That feels like a long time away, so thank you. Let's go immediately. Council liaison reports. Councilor Pack, on the planning and planning, please.
Keeping short since the last time I talked about just the three things that were in the planning mission here. Aware of each of those, on time development. Have the very classically made independent subdivision on the southwest part of town that came through planning and has now worked in that element. It's kind of not right now on the vision estate lands permitting process or what is permitting process of the vision estate lands. We also heard about conditional use application from the road church.
You talking here to speaker? Back to him.
Thank you. We also heard about a conditional use permit from the road church to use the building downtown in their current process of working with Jeff Kennedy and the city staff to help together their plans to do renovations there and assign work that should be adopted as council meeting.
Great. Thank you very much. Winnipeg, Councilor Morton.
Thank you. Different from other commissions that some of the councillors sit on, at Winnipeg, council liaisons may be elected officers. And that is the way they have operated since the very beginning. So we had an election of officers in January, and I am the new chairman of Winnipeg. One of the things that Winnipeg is intending in the near future is to pursue a 501(c)(3) status. That was in the original bylaws and the original plans for Winnipeg was to become a 501(c)(3). More current than that, though, that will take a number of months for that to be processed through everything if it's approved in all areas. But more current than that is the purchase of a server that is going to improve the broadcast abilities of Winnipeg. And if anyone has been watching those stations, you may have noticed that there is some repetition or there is some black space. And that's because we had a major server crash. The server has been put back into operation. It is a temporary fix. But the new server is on order, and we need to work with the cities, hopefully within the next two weeks, and get an LO memorandum of understanding that will update and supersede the one that we voted on earlier in this body that will allow for the purchase and operation of that server so that we can move forward with excellent TV content is being produced. And as we speak, even though it is not being put on the station yet, so there is a great deal of backlog content, and it should make Winnipeg quite fresh and quite new.
Thank you. Mynet, Councilor Hoffman.
Yes. Very briefly, just like to iterate that the board of directors has met, and we're instituting, we're implementing, or finishing the implementation of a new billing system that will greatly improve the ability of the board and the staff to evaluate who's on the system, how long they've been on the system, how much they're spending. And that's going to give us a lot of better information to provide over time. Secondly, just like to say that Don Patton has completed his, general manager has completed the evaluation of order gave him, and he's passed that, and we're moving on to new year.
So. Thank you. Appreciate that. And those city manager and staff reports on the first thing we have in here, Don Patton, transition here from Mynet. Good morning, Don.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, council, citizens. Nice to see everyone here. The Internet of Things. You may have heard this term, but that's only the beginning. The Internet of Things simply means anything that can be connected will be connected. It means machine-to-machine communication and human-to-machine interaction on an unimaginable scale. IOT is its acronym for Internet of Things is in fact Europe. Recently, a delegation of five people, myself, Sean Irvine, who is here, Skip Newberry of the Technical Association of Oregon, and Zijia Shewell, our consultant, our key Mynet's consultant from Net City, and Marilyn Morton went to Kansas City to the gig of Net City Summit. Mynet was in fact a star there because we already have a place what others eagerly wish to realize. The Internet of Things is not just a concept. It's a cultural evolution sweeping the technology at last stage. We stand at the threshold of technology development not knowing what we don't know. Inspiration, innovation, and implementation are the drivers of IOT. Mynet will be fostering inspiration and partnering with the innovators. The summit was a positive experience with very positive returns. We learned that the literacy at all levels, from basic to digital, is a surmountable challenge with the right actions and the right partners. We learned through other stories what not to do. Always valuable information. We learned that a prime driver in the Internet of Things world is in fact partnerships. Proactive interaction is essential. Also critical is forming a team of innovative figures to help envision the future and chart creative directions for my end. Sean and Skip Newberry of the TAO are already partnering on some exciting things. Marilyn and the TAO will work with the schools right here in Monmouth and Independence on a project that will touch many of the gray belts. And Zijia Shewell is spearheading a large project that's engaging global agriculture, Central School District, Western Oregon University, Intel, Business Oregon, and more. The IOT is the pipeline that will feed economic development. But the best news of all is Mynet is ready. Right now, Mynet is ready to implement the Internet of Things. That's my update to the council. Questions?
Please answer.
I don't have a question, but what I have here is a letter that was written from Kathy Schiffer of the Oregon Universal Services Fund, by her report to the Public Utilities Commission.
Yes.
Yes. You may know about this.
Actually, I heard about it.
Okay. Well, you've been nominated and clearly only one nominated to the public communications panel as the representative from the, what's it called, competitive communication providers to the Public Utilities Commission. So that means you'll be appointed, I'm sure. I mean, there's, yeah, I can't see what. And I have this document that really goes on about how wonderful a job you did. But one of the things I wanted to mention is that there was another person competing with you, and one of their reasons, among several, to appoint you is that Mynet is different from this other communication company and the other companies currently represented on the board. In that, it is a nonprofit public utility that is owned and operated by two cities on Independence. The other companies represented on the board are privately owned and operated. So you will have a unique position representing our communities. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Mynet's representation on the Public Utilities Commission places us in a position that we best need to be in, not be. It's a position of leaving rather than following. So I was anxious to receive this appointment. I hope that it could be just, thank you for mentioning it. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you for coming in this morning. Appreciate it. I think we have quarterly financial reports or government, client, this is all in your area, so however you would like to move forward in your staff reports this morning.
Why don't I jump in first, and I'll let you forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So I didn't know about the PUC appointment, but congratulations to Don, particularly my congratulations to Mynet for that position. That definitely is going to help us in it, as a large community and our position leaderships. That's welcome news.
Just a few other things to try and get through this, and I know we have a fairly lengthy conversations coming up. So we've had our first meeting with our office association and our other meetings with our other two units either scheduled or in the process of being scheduled, and we'll try to get those going and adapt them as quickly as we can. Reminder, tonight, yeah, tonight actually, and today, the rural tourism studio is doing, well, today's their last workshop, and tonight is their community kickoff, and we're hoping for a good turnout there. We will have representations from tribal Oregon. Sean, is there anything you want to add to that in terms of this evening?
No, just it's going to be kind of a wrap-up of everything we're doing. Hope everybody can make it just to kind of hear all the results of it. It is several months process, and there's a lot of good things coming out of it, so it's going to be a way to kind of kick it off and present it and really generate some energy so we can kind of move forward with those projects.
So Sean will be around, so if you have questions after this in terms of the particulars, but again, a good turnout would be useful for us both. Tomorrow, we're going to do our management creed, follow upon several things, including some of what we've heard in our great conversations. As Don mentioned, Internet of Things, we participated in a in the Oregon summit that took place last week, actually, Independence was showcased in Florida Speed, Independence in particular, my, Independence in particular. For Internet Speed, there was an actual video that was shown, it showed a speed contest between Portland, Eugene, and Independence, and shown to a very splendid audience, very significant audience from the Technology Association of Oregon, invited guests, and it was a segment, Mynet out and forth to Eugene and Portland twice, you know, by 10 to 1 speed. This is my areas where we're about ready, and we have some challenges ahead to put together a whole package that will entice folks, but it was a, by and large, it was a great opportunity to showcase the community and our great technology tools that we have. So along the same lines, Don was talking about the involvement in the Little Cities Challenge that Councilor Morton is part of and others, including Intel, Department of Education, Western OSU, some other parties. We are the, I believe, the sole community in the state that has been selected to participate in that process. So that's kind of an exciting opportunity. And then we may have yet another education opportunity, partnership opportunity that we're working with. And it's just one with a consulting for both Mynet and Independence. Anyway, so that's all sort of moving at fairly high speed, which is given the technology, and that's not surprising. But that's, as Don says, the Internet of Things is becoming the absolute conversation for that world. So it's great work. We've had some bulk work on Valley Concrete site, we changed that name at some point, but in the meantime, I'll be a reference, and we're, one, we are going to, and we've got a few people from different urban councils and organizations around the state that we're going to bring together in a room and just do kind of a brainstorm meeting, just to make sure that, given that this is really a legacy property, we want to make sure that we advise you throughout on the right way to go forward in redevelopment of the site. So that's happening in the near future. We are also soliciting geotech proposals to do further geotech work on the entire site so that we have a better understanding of its development potential. So that's ongoing as well. And finally, the mayor and I had a good breakfast session with the new Y director last week. I think he's a design official to the area, Sam Collins. So I think we're, I think we're blessed having this gentleman involved in our area, and together with our Y, which is, that's great ideas, so kind of happy to have him. Questions for the manager before we get other reporters to work? Go ahead. So I had, so I'm going to go ahead and finish. Morning.
Good morning. I give you in your cabinet my memo and financial report. I think that aside from that, the bigger discussion for today is the great questions that you have from our customers. We went out last evening to ISAS meeting at the end of our, and I brought up some good discussions out there. Mr. Bartlett was with us and talked to the folks out there. There is some of them here in this audience too. It was a good turnout last night. I think one of the things that came out of that, those discussions, was we're going to explore tomorrow, we're going to explore how to get our financial reports more detailed and posted on our website, and try to do that on a monthly basis. So for those that want to see that, they'll have all of that information. So that was, it was a good suggestion from the audience last night, and to be more transparent in that area. I give you a memo that we prepared ahead of last night's meeting, and I think the highlight on that is really that through many years, there was no rate hikes, no rate increases for water and sewer utilities. And, you know, that was during the down economy and everything, and, but as a result of that period of no rate increases, there was a lot of diverting in our systems. And so in 2010, retained Mr. Bartlett for a rate study, and instead of doing a large increase as a result of that rate study, the council chose to do several much smaller rate increases over a longer period of time. We're towards the end of that rate study, and at the end of that, we've backgotten rates where they need to be for state to receive bond funding and that, and to be able to work on all of those maintenance projects. Now, our public works, we're out there working on some things that before were just band-aid repairs. And so now it's nice to see our people out there working on it and actually making longer term type repairs. So with that, I would like to introduce again, you know, Mr. Greg Bartlett from Economic and Financial Analysis, and he has a product report for you.
All right. Just a little word.
Okay.
Will that break come up here in a second? I think we jumped right into the rate discussion, if you're okay with that. Just wanted to make one other point before we raise these. We did, we did, we have had four meetings now out in the community to talk about this. We have one more scheduled to talk about it. Store, I think that made it out to more than one, but at least one. So as, as our finance director mentioned, you know, this is not only a sharing information, this is also a listening opportunity. I think it's one that we're going to try, as I said, and I think we're going to continue to try to look at some opportunities to get back out in the community for just general communications, because I think that was one of the things that we heard coming out the door was communication, communication, communication. We're happy you came out and talked to us. And that went a long ways, and I think, so we want to keep that up. It's important. Sometimes you have a message to deliver, sometimes that message is not what you want to hear, but at least if you, I think what we're seeing is that people can talk to you, look you in the eye and say, you know, so tell me about that. You talk about it, they say, I don't like this, say, you know, well, here's why this goes how it goes, you don't ask, yeah, I was going to answer, maybe you want to hear. But I think they appreciate it, and I think we pass that question, yeah, so I think that was a lesson certainly for us, not one that we didn't know, but it was, and we remind that lesson. So I will let Ray continue on. You have his report, you have a recommendation in there. That staff encouraged when he reached this, so I'll let him close us out, and then I'll try to field any questions you may have, or if you wish to, if you have audience questions as well.
Do we have time later to comment on Lori's report?
Let's, let's.
Would you like to do that first?
Yeah, let's do that first before, now, you obviously have a comment.
My apologies for not opening that up for you. The jury trials in December and January that were mentioned, were those impactful on the budget?
Yes.
And is that reflected in this report?
It's in the, the court is in, it's a department of the general fund. So our municipal court now, and, you know, it's normal, it's 50% of our budget, which looks, you know, over 50% of the year. However, the bills, such as our legal counsel for the court, and the judge, and the interpreter, and the jurors, those bills are not in this yet. So it's a significant amount of money for that, those trials.
Okay. And it also mentions a large portion of debt service payments for the year, the end of November and beginning of December. And I don't see anything in the general fund but under debt service and fairly insignificant ones under sewer and water.
The sewer is the only one utility fund now that's carrying debt. So, well, my question is that. So the report says that there were, a large portion were made at the end of November and the beginning of December, and I see 42,000 in sewer and zero in water. So the, most of our debt is now in the geo-bond fund, so it's not reflected in any of these reports. So that would be a good thing to show you next time. It was, our total debt service, if we include Mynet, was 1.7 million dollars in November and December. So most of that, of course, is in different funds, not in the funds that I was funded.
Additional questions? Okay. Let's move to the, hold up, let's move to the utility rate discussion and get this back to the client. Let me, just in response, just follow that, just GMP spin, and we'll move back in. We tried to get you summary reports, reports that are not too large, not too small. Would you like to see budget actuals across all funds? Is that what we're hearing because there's?
Well, I had some concerns just because there were two major things mentioned in the written summary, and they didn't reflect in the budget summary.
They don't reflect in the pages you've seen, they reflect another portion of the budget.
But if it's written in the summary, then it must be something of importance and should be reflected in the numbers.
Can we provide you budget actuals across all funds? That helps with that in the future. So is there further questions I have, or is I'll turn this over? Okay, so we give you an introduction, we're going to turn this over to Ray Bartlett from Economic and Financial Analysis to talk to someone, because you have his report, his oral presentation, the summary, most likely looking to find out if there are any likes, and if you have any questions.
Morning, Ray. Well, good evening, Mayor, council. So a couple of things that we failed to mention is that during this past five years, you also cut costs pretty tremendously in fact, for a while, I was wondering who was going to answer the phone when I called. And you may recall, last year, we restructured all the, all your guests, like a restructure to take advantage of lower interest rates, and it's helped quite a bit in bringing the city out of some pretty red territory and back to the black in most cases. So the reason issue was, of course, that I have a look at, was the new policy this year adopted to charge the base sewer and water rates to customers who asked, voluntarily asked to discontinue service for two or three months while they're away. And the city adopted a policy to continue charging the base rates for both sewer and water and those. And the question was, is it fair, is that necessary? Take a look at it. And yes, most cities have some kind of policy in place to charge for absences because much of the cost of operating your sewer and water systems are fixed. So it doesn't matter how much water is used, or how much sewage flows, see, the cost remains pretty constant. And you also work in a pretty closed system, something called zero-sum scheme. If a customer has a big bill, somebody else has to, because your rates are based on how much cost you own operating your sewer and water systems. Also, I wanted to point out that the water system in particular provides two basis services. Most of us just think of the consumption side of water, turn on a tap, we've got water, and it seems to work. The other function that's not so obvious is fire protection. So much of the system that you're invested in is larger pipes, larger storage, more source of water that you need to provide for happening flow for fire. And that is a very large portion of the capital assets you have laying around. So even when somebody is away from their house for two or three months of time, their house is still being protected from fire. You have fire hydrants strategically located throughout the city, so the fire department can access those and put out a fire in place within the city. And that service is more like insurance than it is a daily use service. Sewer services work whether we're using the system or not. Everybody left town one day, the sewer system was still operating, it's a biological process that keeps running, and all sewer systems, at least in the land and valleys, suffer from something called inflow filtration. You sit in a pretty wet area. You sit in a pretty wet area and that water gets into the sewer system, it flows into sewer street of plants, I'm sure it's been treated. So that goes through. The one policy that we thought might be a bit excessive is that if somebody disconnects and has the meter pulled, the water meter pulled and is absent for some time, they reconnect, they're charged, connection charges, you reinstall the meter, which is fairly costly and takes a fair amount of your staff time to do it. But it also charges a four hundred dollar reconnect fee for the sewer. And in fact, the sewer never really gets disconnected, there is no shut valve to the sewer system. So we suggested that we might reconsider that four hundred dollar charge for those who can't have the meters pulled and then reinstall. Now, meters pull by the city stops charging both the sewer and the water base rates. It's another policy that some other cities, the sewer charge persists no matter whether there's any development on property or not, as long as a stub line put out to a bill charge for it because the sewer system relies on that revenue to cover all its operating So in summary, the policy is something the city probably benefits from for sure and it's probably fair. The makeup of your customer base also affects whether or not a city charges for temporary absences. Cities that are fairly large and have large industrial bases sell a lot of water to commercial industrial customers, the residential sector has less of an impact on total revenue coming in than the communities like Independence where most of your customers are residential and have large industrial customers, commercial customers to, to run the chains in the residential sector. So it seems fairly appropriate not to charge you that much in the city. If you have to discuss or answer any questions, if you might have anything about that policy.
I had a question about the rate, what the charge. It seems even, even if you take out the sewers, you, but our charge is much higher than the cities that you stated that you prepared to, your charge. And I'm wondering, are we really talking out of the balance there? Are they not physically disconnecting or what, you know, what's going on there?
Well, take cities up in the coast like Manzanita and Long Island City. They have fairly high charges and maintain charges even absences because so they, so much of the housing there is, is temporary. It's used every in summer and very low in the winter. They must maintain those, those charges year round. Otherwise, their rates for those who live there would probably be tens of percent higher than they currently are. In other cities, Monument is probably an example, their cost structure is different than yours. And they do have some large commercial customers, including the college, that pay for this. So they don't have any charges for disconnect and reconnect. Good River adopted their rate just a few years ago, I think it was two thousand nine or two thousand ten they put in place. That was in response to the fact so much of their housing has turned into seasonal housing because the summer windboarding market has developed there, become more of a transient community than they have in the past. Although they do have some industry to support part of their costs, a couple breweries there, wineries there, they use a fair amount of water. And in terms of your rates, that's a function of where you get your water and what kind of sewer treatment processes you have. I haven't come up with a valid average cost state of origin among those valid because things change so much different from place to place. And the customer base also has a big impact on how we service this charge. So I put it out there just so you can see where you are on, on a scale, but how meaningful it is is questionable because, you know, it is what it is. Any sort of community has lived with what you've got and what it costs to provide the services that you have.
I have one. You mentioned, Greg, when you talked about the different kinds of rate structures that exist is, I think that might be, I only have a partial knowledge here and so that might be helpful for me.
You first of all comply with all the annual costs this year that are going to term ownership. And then the question is how they can allocate that to customers. Basically, we're trying to work against equity and efficiency at the same time. You need the money, but the question is who should pay for it? Almost invariably, communities try to charge based on usage, some portion of usage, but as I pointed out earlier, most of your costs are fixed. So when consumption goes down, your cost goes down and stays the same. So depending on the community's situation, there's a division between how much revenue you're going to take from base rate and how much consumption rate. Generally speaking, smaller communities tend to have very high base rates and very little coming from consumption rates. Communities that are heavily indebted on their sewer and water systems tend to have fairly high base rates and fairly low consumption rates. More mature and larger communities that face water shortage problems, I can name a few of those for you, Ashland's a good example, they are shifting their rates from having to have lower base rates to higher consumption rates because they want to give the consumer the message that water is scarce, very scarce. And the more you use, the more it's going to cost you revenue to do that. And that policy works pretty well until you have drought. So again, to find a way in Ashland, but last year they had to institute conservation and keep people from using water. As a product, their revenues dropped rapidly as well, which puts them in a pinch. Do we raise rates because we conserve water? That's the case. So depending on your circumstances, the balance between that and base rates and consumption rates is important. And it lends to whether or not you have something that's financially stable over time or something that has a very amount of variance in it. So communities that do have high consumption rates and low base rates tend to carry much larger cash reserves because at some point they're going to get into a mild wet summer and not like the revenues that they were normands led during that peak season and have to rely on it. So the trade-offs are financial stability versus signaling customers about how much it costs to provide the next day of water. Is that open, Mayor?
Thank you for that explanation. I filled this hole that I had in that portion.
I have a question. I, I understand the base rates and the usage rates and, and I see that you've compared some of both here. And I'm assuming that you picked these cities because they were of similar size to ours. Is there any value in a study that looks at per capita rating?
It would probably give you the same allocation, the same comparisons. Also, the selection of the cities there, I tried to pick up cities that were nearby independents and picked some other cities I knew were the extremes. I picked out several more cities than this, so the time we had to get the survey done, the survey reflects those I picked out and those who actually called back and gave me the information. It wasn't quite as focused as you'd be, I hope. So is there, in the second part of your question, elaborate a little bit more about what you're looking for?
Well, because different cities have different circumstances and different natural situations and different operating costs, I assume that the operation costs for Portland, for instance, are hu, are huge costs, but they have a huge population also. So I was just curious what the correlation is to a city like that or to a Eugene and to Independence, Monument on a per capita basis.
Yeah. It would be useful in pointing out, I guess, the difference is, when I read engineers' reports about how they design systems, they try to reduce everything down to equivalent dwelling units. So if you go into a city like Salem or Portland, you find that the number of equivalent dwelling units that have is several times the population size. Some of that, they've got large industries there that use a huge amount of water. And in Independence, you've got to find out that the equivalent dwelling unit number comes pretty close to the number of households in that city because you don't have large industries here. So converting that down to a per capita basis, yes, you can see quite a difference in Salem. I think somebody pointed out comparison to Seattle and Portland, the per capita costs there would be substantially less than there. There are, especially on the sewer side where there are tremendous economies of scale, the sewer treatment operations are available, the cost per unit, I should say, seem very low per capita cost in those kinds of communities compared to Independence.
I, I would echo Tom that I was a little surprised that we were at the top of the list in so many places.
I can point out others that are higher, they're also smaller communities. I have communities that have some, have some problems with their, with their water systems.
But I also recall.
The culture goes back and forth.
I see, I'm sure that it does. I also recall the discussions early on that we needed to come to some kind of parity so we could qualify for economic development loans and, and state funds when we needed to build a new system.
Additional questions for, for Ray before we get to the council discussion?
I'll go with a comment about us being the red, was the order.
Yeah, I think, at least in the sewer and water system, you're back into the black that for years you were spending back in cash reserves. Solely ramped up the water and sewer rates of the last five years. So you were burning down your cash reserves. This is the first year, I think, remember Lori, how far back I could go before I find out that you actually didn't overspend the budget to, more or less, grow even to here in this.
Yeah, in twenty fourteen, I think we started seeing the turnaround.
Just a question for Ray. Is that going anywhere? Okay. Thank you for visiting with us. I know council's taken a look at, we have some reports here. I was, as was the reference in the staff report, I too was a little concerned of the connection, disconnection charges. I think a lot of people, I think fellow folks have some thoughts on this. What do you folks think? Is this kind of like under general just conversation discussion?
Well, how often does that occur? That disconnect?
We don't have that occurrence often. Is it once a year?
Well, you know, percentage of population, you know, there's, there's only maybe ten a year. I think we saw more when, when there were a lot of closures going on, so those have decreased now. So it's not, it's not occurring at a, at a great extent. It's more, you know, the people that have gone extended vacation or had a second family to go to. It's that, generally that type occurrence. So, and, and I see for the most part that most cities do continue to charge the sewer base regardless of whether they've, they've got the water going or not. That, that is.
So that, that seven hundred and fifty dollar reconnect is totally move the meter?
Yes.
Physically?
Yes.
Of course, you can't like stay in the sewer.
Right.
But what is it? I, I was trying to do the way you said, is it two hundred, a four hundred for?
It's four hundred dollars for a sewer connect, connection.
And then two fifty for the water?
Two fifty for the water plus the price of the meter.
Right. Okay. Now, that's a connection or a reconnect?
Either.
But, but.
If, if somebody's just got their water turned off, that doesn't apply.
That's suspending.
Right. That's, that's just going out and turning it back on. I don't know what that fee is at this time, but it's.
Let me, I'm, I'm, now I'm confused. So I'm, yeah, I'm going to go to, let's say I go to Africa for a year. Okay. And I don't want to pay, you know, I want, I want to be disconnected. Okay. So at this point, my humans, I want to be disconnected. You, you can come out to my home and you physically take out the meter?
We would ask you to verify, you'd have to sign on on that you wanted to abandon your service. So that disconnecting is abandoning your service. It's in this ca, in that scenario, it would be voluntary. And yes, we would take the meter out and you would no longer be paying your, at this time, water for sewer base fees. The other scenario is you just want your, your service discontinued, would go out, turn off the water, and you continue paying the base fees.
But then when you want your service free, we just.
Yeah, you state it as a call and we turn, go out and turn it back on.
And there's no fee for that?
Correct. Well.
No.
I don't know. I think that there is just a nominal fee, is there? No?
I specifically asked the front desk to make sure that there's no fee.
No, there's not.
So when, and this may be for Mr. Bartlett, on page twelve of our packet, which is six of your report, the reconnect fee, is that seven hundred and fifty dollars that Independence is charging, is that an equivalent comparison to like the city of Sherwood that charges twenty-five dollars for a reconnect? Is that?
Is that apples to apples?
Yes, I believe it is.
So if you moved to Sherwood and build a house, it only costs you twenty-five dollars to connect to the sewer?
First connection, no. If the system's already charged, it'd be several thousand dollars plus seven hundred dollars back if you make a disconnection. Once the lines are in place, the meter's going to install once and pull that out, it'll charge twenty-five dollars to the vacuum. So that's an existing, pre-existing house. Sherwood's SDC is probably helping the neighbors.
Well, I, that, that is a glaring disparity for Independence on that particular page.
And others like Manzanita, for example, that charges a hundred and sixty, the surcharge, but they never allow you to stop paying the base fee for sewer. So it, it's a little difficult to make the apples and oranges compared closely because the, the, but you're right, it's, it is higher than most of the communities are. Most of it is a four hundred dollar sewer.
But what I'm understanding is that these cities that are charging like twenty-five dollars, they're not recouping their cost in that twenty-five dollars. They're, it's built into their other rates to.
That's correct.
Cover those costs.
Exactly.
Here, we're trying to actually charge the actual order.
That's correct.
It looks like you recommend that we reduce it to three fifty.
Yes. I think that would probably be something that would make it more plausible, especially for somebody that's planning beyond for several months, but if I'm planning to lose the health period.
Was there any questions?
But, and it was specifically, what was being recommended in his report is eliminate the option to disconnect sewers so that you would continue to install as a base. Since you really can't, I mean, you could physically disconnect the sewer line, but that would be a different kind of, that would be a different kind of made of this discussion that we're talking here. So really, I think the recommendation is just eliminate that option, which we don't think is, that's my choice. Now that you can disconnect your water or not disconnect your sewer, right now we require that you disconnect both services. But physically, what's going on is all you're disconnecting is the water. You're having to pay for reconnection for both, even if you're only physically disconnect one service.
So you wouldn't have to continue to pay a base rate?
I think the recommendation is yes, you would.
You would?
You're still covering those costs.
That clearly, okay, I got that.
I understand, for instance-
But then it ended up, and then three fifty reconnect?
I understand that under winter conditions, which is a good portion of the year, we have, you know, ran the inflation infiltration of our system. That typically gets high as ten to one of what our effluent just charges versus inflow infiltration. Ten gallons, every one gallon of effluent. So we spend far more time treating inflow infiltration than we do actually effluent in our system. So we don't warm up any of those comments.
I know when we first started the discussion back in Queens in, about water rates, it's very, very thing. And I dangle, I give the chilly description of what we have for sewer new food if we didn't design it within a five to six year term. And that'll scare you.
It will.
So I have a basic building downtown, and I pay the water, the everything. So I, the impact, I can understand that. But I also understand the situation that it ends in and mutually can't, I want it to be still, toilet can still flush ten years from now. And I understand that. That's all.
Other thoughts?
Well, first, I'd like to suggest that we take a look, as I read through this, you know, I looked at seven fifty for a reconnect, I had the same reaction, I think everybody on the council did. And I like, as I read through the recommendations on eliminating the sewer reconnect as a, that makes sense to me. Do we want staff to go forward with doing what needs to happen related to sewer reconnection?
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, I'm trying to take notes here. Okay, so I think with the, so there's a consensus here that we want staff to come back on sewer reconnect, taking care of that, that, okay. I hear everybody saying yes. So if you move forward on that, on that particular area. Other things? I think, go ahead. I think there were some other questions at the meeting about jurisdiction, who is supposed to be charging, you know, if it goes to Ash Creek. Or have those been settled yet, or is it still in that debate?
We're having, we're still gonna have, at least one community, you know, or three meetings on that particular topic. If we have any suggestions along those lines, we bring them up next to the incoming council meeting.
Why, just like you're the opposite one we, when you have?
We'll report back to you one way or the other. Is that Mayor?
Yeah, no, I'm, yeah, related, but separate issues, yeah. Because what's rates about, sewer water?
I have one more clarification question. I'm still looking at this disconnect fee. And I like your analogy about Africa, so I'm gonna use it again. If I leave for six months in Africa and I call the city and I say, I want my water disconnected, I would assume that that means you're gonna turn off my water for six months while I go away, but not remove my meter?
That's correct. We would, however, make sure that we have, we're clear that you just want your water turned on and you would continue to pay the base water.
So when I come back in six months, are you gonna charge me two fifty to reconnect?
No, because we haven't, you have not abandoned your service.
Okay.
Which would be charged, the fee, the basics?
The base, right.
And I have to disclose also that I'm a property owner downtown to suffering the same empty building?
Do you think you have something more? I'm finding, I think we focused on, we have to see, so Mr. Bartlett is here. I would just, I'd like to maybe have you address where we go from here. We've talked about the city, how it's been in that over a number of years. And also, we know that during that time there were a lot of houses that were vacant because of port closures, et cetera. So that has some impact on the cost and our inability to address the current maintenance. So that's one thing. But then also, Chris had mentioned us being at the end of a rate study. And we're now in the black. So just kind of where do we go from here in terms of rate decisions?
Well, rate stays are based on forecasts. A couple of them know, forecasts are only good for so long in the future because you're only see so far out. So typically, our analysis is good for three to five years. And not things have changed during that period that helps to redo it again and see where you're going. The current, especially since we've been through a very deep recession and that big impact on probably this reporting compared with many other cities in the state. So yeah, sure, a point where it would help to take a look again and look ahead and see what else has, you know, it also has some capital improvements that have put off for some years, especially in the waterside, that need to be addressed and on the sewer side. More on the sewer side than the waterside. So you have some future to look forward to. Sewer side, that's probably coming up like in about a year?
Twenty sixteen?
Twenty sixteen. So it would help to take a look at it again and see where you are and how that's gonna be in place. Right now, interest rates are low. There's also federal state programs that are able to help with that, people's capital improvements. Yeah, you're at the point where it helps to take a look at it.
Please supplement that. I think Ray's pointing something, you have to point out correctly. We have to rely on forecasts. One of the things that we're doing in short order, this is really kind of reversing the order of how we address the rate study. We are part of retreat tomorrow and part of coming budget conversations. We will produce a first sort of citywide capital improvement program. And we'll obviously bring two budget meeting into the council. The fact of the place, the forecast would be much easier for you to project, work on, establish that rate, that rate necessities and move forward. So that's coming up in that order of things very shortly. So rate forecasts will get updated subsequent to the capital improvement being finalized.
So, so what I experienced, plus it, is that we're gonna do a rate study?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, so that, that's, all right.
We've done it, the one time we've updated and it'd be a little more apparent.
Additional steps that we should take at this moment? I have a feeling this is gonna be an ongoing, ongoing conversation, ongoing understanding.
That is correct. I mean, we will be coming to you, you know, again at some point in time. I'll wait with the CIP and capital program. We'll come to you with the results of the updated rate study. It'll probably be a five-year study against the past, because it was five years ago. Again, as I mentioned, we treat that every each year to check for accuracy. But by heart, we need a brand new study that'll come to you in some time in the, in the correct order of things, the next several months. And yes, we will be having rate conversations every year. And it just doesn't go away, it's constant, constant, stay fixed every year. So that's-
Okay. One other request I'd like to make is, I heard talk about the discussions around the area that you went to. What's the organization you went to last night at the airport?
ISAS? It was one of the, correcting if I'm wrong, Council Packet. It was one of the homeowners association. It was kind of the broader one.
Okay. Could the council, we can be informed when those meetings are going to happen so we can attend if we want to?
I have a thought here. We, Council Packet was available at that meeting last night.
Okay. Is there anything else we need to do right at this moment related to this? I think there's gonna be further, you know, we're gonna have lots more water water conversations. Would it be fair to anticipate that the sewer charge issue, would that be in front of us next time?
I, should be, shouldn't be a simple change. So the other thing we could do is make any enforcement that particular provision or where the law or if law demands pending so that we don't charge anybody that well for developing that code change. It sounds like that's where you want to go.
Yes.
Is that okay with everybody? Okay? Well, that, so, you know.
We'll disconnect, what I'm understanding from all of you now is we'll discontinue charging the sewer reconnect at four hundred dollars. We will continue to charge the base fee. There will be no disconnect where the, a voluntary abandonment of the sewer.
Unless somebody shows up to tackle.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And so then, and we'll expect some paperwork at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Other, please go.
Then staff will come back to council with some proposal to address the recommendations in our Mr. Bartlett's report as well as kind of what the future plans are for updating the rate study.
Could you do the whole, the final one after your?
So I just want to be clear, then where we're leaving this is can staff will come back with a proposal to address the recommendations in our Mr. Bartlett's report as well as what the future plans are for updating the water, water extension?
Unless we have objection, we will proceed with rate study when we have the capital improvement program approved or at least finalized, we've filed for. So we need to have that work done. We could initiate that rate at any time. If you want that, if you want specific timing, we could put something together. But it's just going to proceed, you know, very, you know, in a normally fashion.
Yeah, I would compare that if, that you can go ahead on updating the rate studies. And the projection.
Okay. We're feeling we're communicating here?
I think, yeah, we will proceed with rate study. We'll proceed with capital improvement program. And in the next meeting, you should see paperwork to make this code change of. Is that for us all?
Okay, anything else we want to talk about related to this at this moment? Okay, without that, we're gonna keep moving on to the agenda. That's okay? Want to get the agenda backed out here?
Mr. Mayor, just a, sorry, one last piece. Just to echo what Lori started with, Finance Director started with. We will also look at any kind of administrative pieces we can do to increase transparency with respect to the website so that people can get more information by diving into our, the finance department on the website and see what we can do to post it without considering all our available data resources.
Okay. Okay, I think, Lori, I think you're still up because we have a resolution adopting the financial policy that we've had in front of us several times. Can I take it this is the formal of what we previously discussed?
Yes, and there was a, we did the verbiage change that Council Packet flooded on, I believe it's page seventeen. Do you recall? I made that change.
I was looking through, I didn't see anything jump out because I think I gotta get out the thing here. So we looked at this a couple of times previously. Does it, does it look okay to everybody? Everybody looking over here? Okay, and we discussed this on several occasions. We've got the phraseology, I believe, phrase. Sometimes I'm stuck for a word. It's an action item. Someone please.
I move the adopt resolution number fifteen, that first be ninety-nine, adopting comprehensive financial policy that's presented by staff in today's agenda.
Second, have motion second, it's our discussion. All of their advice, and I, I think opposed. Here is, yes, thank you. Thank you for being, continuing, it took us a while. We have new budget. Mr. Flyen, I think you want to talk about budget officer and the budget calendar?
Well, you have in your packet, you have in your packet the proposed budget calendar that's been prepared by the Finance Director. So if that needs with your approval, it's very similar to what has been done in prior years. At the same timeframe, it seems to have worked rather effectively. And also, you're having your, in there, a suggested motion to, because we made our Finance Director excellent budget officer and did last year as well. So with that, that's our request to you.
Questions?
I have one about the calendar. At what point does the Budget Committee get their information?
They generally get their information the night of the budget meeting, the first meeting.
The approach that I've always taken, and I think we ran a base with, is that our first meeting is really not about diving into the numbers. We're looking at, I mean, candidly, in fact, we have done that in the past, so we don't have to do that approach. But what we like to focus on is the philosophy of the budget, the goals of the budget, the management of the budget. Really, the budget's a planning tool, it's not an accounting tool. So the accounting tool, the management, the plan. So really, what we're talking to you about is the budget message and the overall presentation of what is the direction of the city. You know, that we believe that it should be over the coming year. With that, then the numbers should track and follow so you can, as you have in the past, spend the rest of the evening going through those pages or not. But we try not to frankly think of getting up numbers ahead of time with a distraction because it gets us focused in on, I think this was very council's message. That's a philosophy I've had for years. We don't have to take that approach. I think, you know, the place to do things differently.
Also, it's laid out in the book more than likely a lot that typically the Budget Committee does not hear or see the budget message until the time of that first budget meeting. So if we were to give out the budget to the Budget Committee ahead of time, it would be without that budget message. So the philosophy there is that really just the numbers don't have a whole lot of meaning without all of the narrative and hearing without what the- meaning without all of the, um, the narrative and hearing about what the council, you know, I mean, incorporating the strategic plan and, um, this year will be incorporating the, um, capital improvement plan. And so, it would be missing all of those items.
So, as I'm looking at this budget calendar here, the Budget Committee, along with the, um, council, would receive the budget information, the numbers, for the first time on April twenty-ninth. And is that, uh, as I recall, last year, we got the budget mess- message and went through the budget all in one night?
Yes, we did.
Um, I, I do need to report that I had some negative feedback from Budget Committee members about not getting it all done in one night because there was not time to, to look over the numbers carefully.
And, and we could reiterate that we don't have to do it all in that one night. We've got, uh, we've got it scheduled out, we've got three meetings, um, possible or available in the calendar. Um, I believe that we made that a choice, but, um, hopefully, people would, um, our, in fact, committee meeting members would speak up if they're not, um, up to, you know, seeing that whole thing in one evening. That's, you know, with that...
We prepare as if, as if you were going to do it all in one night, but we are perfectly capable of staff to support you to have a meeting, and, and, and some meetings that you wanna take, spend with them.
Yes, absolutely.
So, what we have, uh, before us, we have to officially appoint a budget officer, and we have to officially adopt the budget calendar. And, uh, is, uh, and I might need to, did somebody already move this?
No. No, but I'd be happy to, and I can admit it's a one, one sweep.
Yeah, this, this reservation.
I move to adopt the two thousand fifteen, sixteen budget calendar as presented and to appoint Laurie Page Financial Director as budget officer.
I have a motion second discussion, all of the experts, aye. Aye. I have closed motion carries. Uh, for historic preservation code updating. Excuse me.
So, we have a string time again, we're free to, for, for, for our personal studio starts at nine o'clock sharp. We can start if you'd like. Uh, sorry, I won't get very far. Uh, and just a little part of a, we're all present in studio as well as presentation.
Our, um, is it, is this a process discussion? We're looking, looking at just kind of an update, um, other...
So, what I was hoping, what I was hoping to do was essentially just move it over to you all so that you're familiar with it. We're, we're close to a final draft. And so, essentially, I wanted to go over it with you guys, make sure you're very familiar, comfortable with it. Send the legal team, make sure that they're comfortable with it, and then bring it back to you all for adoption. So, essentially, that's kind of where we're at in the process.
I'd rather be more thoughtful than try and squeeze it in in eleven and a half minutes because I know you have other things. Uh, is there a downside if we move this over?
I don't think...
I mean, you know...
Yeah. If we push it to the next meeting, I think that's fine. You know, we, we don't wanna push it too far because building season's gonna be on us soon.
They'll all be sitting here with pitchforks, great. Either, either being members, you're right.
Yeah.
Would it be assistance if we have the draft document to look at ahead of time?
Um, it's, it's been in several of the council packets, we just haven't gotten to it.
It's online?
Yes.
Because of being an agenda packet?
Yes. I'm assuming it was probably in the city.
It was in December, and I, I kept mine. December.
Are you going to send a link to that particular agenda?
Okay. But, but I get it.
We'll send a link. We'll send out active links to that agenda.
Oh, good. Because I, 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 like, not my state's mine, but, uh, it's that one.
You can have it, we can say aye.
I do.
Okay. So, we'll move that forward. Is there other items that we need to address today, folks? All of the experts, if I say aye. I have closed motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.